Thank you, Kim. Okay, I'll call a meeting order. The agenda, any additions or deletions? Dustin's moving the agenda. Okay. I'm gonna go in and open the public hearing now. So, oh, we don't want to vote today. Okay, that's carried. Now I'll open the public hearing. We will go for, get some glasses, and we'll be able to see what we're going for. Twenty-two eleven. Kayleen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bylaw twenty-two-two-eleven is submitted by Global REMAC surveys on behalf of J. M. Patrice Pancoast to reclassify a seven-acre parcel from agricultural IDP District to country residential District Two. Existing title is twenty-five acres in size and is located within the northwest twenty-six thirteen-seven west of Fourth Meridian. If the land use amendment is approved, then the applicant's intent is to apply to the Planning Commission for subdivision approval to create a separate title. Property is located along the Old Trans-Canada Highway, approximately point-eight kilometers north of Highway five-twenty-four. Proposed reclassification area will have no alternative option but direct and immediate access from the Old Trans-Canada Highway, and the proposed area is currently vacant. Remainer of the title contains an established residence and yard and is located just to the east of an existing five-lot multiparseal country residential subdivision as is shown on the adjacent landowner district map. There are no oil or gas wells in proximity. Proposed overlay parcel, sorry, is located within the commercial industrial area and the highway interchange overlay area of the tri-area IDP. The land use amendment application as proposed does not comply with the commercial industrial policy area intent of the plan. In consideration of policy review, the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan states that municipalities are responsible for the planning and development processes to ensure land is available for development such as residential, commercial, and industrial lands, municipal roads and water, and wastewater treatment facilities to accommodate population growth. Section two-point-nine Commercial Industrial Area of the IDP states that the area has been identified as a location for commercial and industrial uses for all three municipalities. Site conditions and strategic location near major transportation infrastructure, utilities and complementary land uses are appropriate for non-res uses in this area. While the intent is to minimize residential occupancy of the area, a single lot from an unsubdivided quarter section may be permitted. Section two-point-nine-point-two states that multiparseal country residential is not permitted in the area, and section two-point-one-three identifies the highway interchange overlay, which a map is included on council's report for information. Section ten-point-one-point-one Collaborative Approach of the Municipal Development Plan states that the county shall continue to support jurisdictional alliances that facilitate the provision of transportation networks, municipal servicing infrastructure, economic diversification, and environmental and recreational initiatives. Section ten-point-one-point-three states that the county shall resolve disputes within adopted IDP boundaries in accordance with the method outlined in the IDP and in alignment with the MGA. Thanks, Terwin. We circulated the application to Alberta Transportation, and they replied that should the approval authority find sufficient merit to ratify the rezoning, the subsequent subdivision would be contrary to section fourteen and subject to the requirements of fifteen-two of the subdivision and development regulation. Alberta Transportation's primary objective is to allow subdivision and development of properties in a manner that will not compromise the integrity and safe operational use or future expansion of the provincial highway. To that end, currently as proposed, the proposed parcel will be physically separated by the CP right-of-way from Highway one within direct access to the highway being gained solely by way of the local road system. Given this, Alberta Transportation does not anticipate that the creation of the parcel as proposed would have any appreciable impact on the highway, and Alberta Transportation would grant a waiver of section fourteen and fifteen-two at this time of subdivision. Applicant would be advised that any development within the highway right-of-way or within three-hundred meters beyond the limit of a controlled highway or within eight-hundred meters from the center point of an intersection of the highway would require the benefit of a permit from Alberta Transportation. At the time of writing report, no comments were received from the town or the city, and no written comments or objections were submitted from adjacent landowners. So my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, is refusal, as the proposal does not comply with section two-point-nine Commercial and Industrial Area Policy of the IDP and section ten Collaborative Approach of the County's Municipal Development Plan. And on page three, there is also alternative motions if council wishes to consider.
Okay, thank you, Kayleen. Is there any questions for the planner on this? I'm not seeing any. Richard?
The proposed Trans-Canada Highway upgrade improvement, I guess, that would be to the west of this proposal, right? It's not gonna be up against it, it would be to the west.
It would be further to the west and further to the south.
Any other questions? Michelle?
Um, I know the city in Redcliffe said that they had no comments, but because of that IDP, is, they're gonna, like, could there be, possibly be an issue if it's, because there's a bunch of houses there already, so why, I don't understand why we shouldn't let them put it there. Other than the IDP.
Yes, I guess if council wishes to deviate from the requirements of the IDP, both the city and town of Redcliffe would have the ability to challenge the county and council on the bylaw and take us forward through the courts to resolve the dispute.
Because it is a legal document that we have signed with them. Jeffrey?
Just to, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to give a little bit of background for this particular area of the tri-area IDP. It's in, in basically an area that's been identified for commercial and industrial use. So the idea of adding more residential titles, while in this case, because it's already, or in, in close proximity to an existing multiparseal country residential subdivision, the problem is, is that it compounds the fact that you're adding more residential titles, which may be not, or which may not be compatible with the identified commercial and industrial uses that are targeted for this area. So it basically just, it, it, or it compounds the fact that you've got more non-compatible uses in the area which might hinder future commercial and industrial development, which was what was originally targeted for this area. Now, I guess if, you know, if the three municipalities decide in the future that, you know, maybe that's not as big of an issue, I guess that's something that could be discussed for further amendments to the tri-area IDP, but that's the reason why it doesn't comply is because not trying to compound more, compound the issue by having more residential development, which would be not compatible with future industrial and commercial.
Shane?
I get all that, but there's also the common sense rule. That nobody will put industrial right there. If there's houses and everybody right there, you're close to the tracks, you got all the other area to the west and to the east from that highway, it's not even bordering the secondary highway five-twenty-four. So all we're looking at, if we deny it, is just on a technicality, but to me it makes common sense because it's a useless piece of property that nobody's gonna really build anything in there, guys. I mean, look where it's really sitting. And it's not direct access, if everybody wants direct access to the highway. So if you put a commercial building there, you'll have to upgrade the Old Trans-Canada Highway and that where we've got it, land all along the five-twenty-four that's not being used. So, that's my, there, I mean, we gotta, there comes a common sense rule, too.
Play.
I do agree with that, too. I'm just, I guess I have one question. So how did the resident, those other residents get in there before? Was that done before the IDP was formed?
Jeffrey? Yep. Hold on. Turn your mic off. There you go.
Yes, that's correct. The, um, sorry, I don't have, I can't see the plan number of that subdivision, but, pardon? Okay, so zero-zero, so it was basically that subdivision was created in two thousand. I was gonna guess the late nineties, so two thousand. Um, and the IDP was, came into, was formally adopted in twenty-ten, or two thousand and ten. So it was, it was there prior, prior to the IDP, but I guess the, I, I, and I don't dispute the arguments that Counselor Hawke made in, in regards of, you know, does this one parcel make that big of a difference in terms of the overall, you know, big picture? But it's the overall big picture that we have to be concerned with is certainly if, if, you know, obviously going against the IDP would probably, you know, send a message to the city and town of Redcliffe, whatever, however they would want to interpret that, but anyway, the, the other concern, of course, is that where do you stop in terms of using discretion for other residential developments? Because, like I say, the more residential development you add to this area, it's gonna make it harder for other industrial or commercial businesses to be able to locate and still have some distance of separation to be able to allow them to operate for whatever their, you know, nuisance situations that they might create, whether it's noise or unsightliness or dust or those types of things. So that's something that we have to keep in mind.
Okay, thank you, Jeffrey, but we're getting off topic here. That debate is for when we get out of it, this part of it, so do you have any more questions for the planner at this point in time? Okay. Michelle? Must be a good question.
My question was, would it make a difference if he went to all three municipalities and did this?
Well, that's kind of the, the point of our mandatory circulation when we have applications that arise. Yeah, that's why we, we notify both the city planning as well as town of Redcliffe planning to gauge their level of support or, or non-support. But like Jeffrey mentioned, the, the ultimate thing is that it doesn't comply with the bylaw unless the IDP were to be amended at some point.
Any other questions? Not seeing any? Uh, well, I have to ask if the applicant's hearing has any comments, but I don't think Keith is involved in this one. So not seeing anybody present. We won't have any questions for him. There's nobody here to speak for or against the application. So with that one, I'm gonna close the public hearing on that one, since there's nobody here. And we will go on to public hearing twenty-two-two-twelve. Didn't even give you a break to catch your breath there, did we?
Just bear with me, I'll get through it.
Take your time.
Uh, bylaw twenty-two-two-slash-twelve submitted by Benchmark Geomatics on behalf of Michael Stewart-Bullen to reclassify a thirteen-point-one acre parcel from agricultural District Two to country residential District Two. Existing title is a hundred-and-thirteen-point-four acres in size and contains dryland pasture and located within the northwest twenty-six thirteen-seven west of Fourth Meridian. At the March meeting of the Planning Commission, a decision on subdivision application twenty-one-CY-nineteen was postponed to allow Mr. Bullen to apply to council for a land use amendment. Therefore, if land use amendment approval is granted, the applicant's intent will be to apply for subdivision approval to create a separate land title. Property is located along the Black and White Trail, approximately zero-point-eight kilometers south of Township Road one-twenty. The area will be required to gain access from the existing internal roadway which services the subdivision. The remainder of the agricultural title gains legal access from an existing access easement agreement which crosses the northwest of thirty-three, further to the north, and was executed and registered against the titles in two thousand and sixteen. The proposed reclassification area is currently vacant, however, is located just to the east of an existing four-lot country residential subdivision as again shown on the adjacent land use districts. Thanks, Lesley Ann. The applicant is proposing to separate the parcel from the remainder of the quarter section due to the severance of the corridor by the existing Essamidi Reservoir and Canal Right-of-Way. Furthermore, the northern boundary of the southwest thirty-three is expected to be impacted to some degree when Highway one realignment is constructed by Alberta Transportation, and there is no current right-of-way registered for the, the future highway on the Alberta land title. Proposed reclassification areas located outside of the tri-area IDP boundary however lie immediately south of the potential growth area, or sorry, potential service commercial area of the IDP as well as the Township Road one-twenty area structure plan. The lands contained within these planned boundaries are identified as a suitable location for commercial industrial development over the long term. The South Saskatchewan Regional Plan states that municipalities are to identify their agricultural land and to limit fragmentation and conversion to non-agricultural uses. This is promoted by approaches to reduce the amount of land taken up by permanent or long-term development by utilizing the minimum amount of land necessary. Section four-point-one-point-two-three Subdivision Residential of the Municipal Development Plan states that the county may support the subdivision of an existing parcel if the following conditions are met. The parcels including the farmstead are redistricted to the appropriate country residential land use. Country residential parcel conforms to the applicable country residential regulation in the land use by law. Applicants at the time of submitting the subdivision application must comply with the county design guidelines and construction standards. The subdivision will not impact or hinder the agricultural use on the balance of the quarter, and all parcels have direct access to the existing municipal road network or provincial highway. Although the parcel is eligible for subdivision under the existing agricultural district, the Planning Commission for compatibility purposes desired for council's review of this application to redistrict the lands to country residential two. The minimum or the maximum parcel size for the country residential District Two is ten acres, and therefore the parcel as proposed would not comply with that parcel area requirement. However, on the map there, we've provided a future land map showing the footprint of the future Highway one realignment, and as you'll see, the, the parcel that's proposed for the reclassification area would be cut into approximately half, which would equal about a six-point-five acre area that would actually be developable to be built upon, and that area would comply with the country residential two district. And councils use the, their discretion in the past. If there's a, an excusable reason or a good merit to allow a deviance from the land use by law in the Municipal Development Plan, council has allowed that in the past. We did circulate the application to Alberta Transportation, and they replied that they are not a required referral. However, their primary objective is to allow subdivision and development of properties in a manner that will not compromise the integrity and associated safe operational use or expansion of the highway system. The applicant is advised that Highways one and three form an integral part of the national highway system of which the ultimate service classification is freeway. Alberta Transportation's long-range freeway access management plans include a realignment of Highways one and three in the vicinity of the city of Medicine Hat, and they have endorsed the Highways one and three functional planning study which identifies an alignment in future right-of-way for the corridor. Whereas the parcel to be created will be impacted, given that the timing of the realignment has yet to be determined and at this juncture is considered long-range. Whereas the parcel to be created will be impacted, given that the timing of the realignment has yet to be determined and at this juncture is considered long-range. Future plans should not be a deterrent in the county's deliberation for the creation of the proposed parcel. However, to ensure that the realignment plans are not compromised, development on the parcel requires a permit from Alberta Transportation. And at the time of writing the report, no comments or objections were received from adjacent owners. Therefore, my recommendation is approval as the proposal complies with the agricultural strategy under the implementation of the plan of the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan as well as section four point one point two three subdivision residential of the county's municipal development plan.
Okay, thank you, Kayleen. Does anybody have any questions for the planner? Shane?
So Kayleen, the access then would be coming off the Black and White along that canal. Doesn't show how much right-of-way they really have there because that canal is built up in that spot. So the road would be down lower, actually. For access coming off of Black, the Black and White Inn. Yeah. On the south, you know what I'm, what is, how much, what is the distance that they got from that canal to build the access road?
What's this?
Recalling from what was contained on the survey's diagram, I believe it's about a, a ten meter width that's provided there. Um, but as a condition on the subdivision, we've chatted with, um, Mr. Bullen about the potential of either consolidating that, that portion of that private drive strip or potentially negotiating with SMIR to see if they would be interested in acquiring it for the canal right-of-way. I know that that is their, the current primary access into the, the site. And then across the, um, end of the cul-de-sac there where the internal service road is, they've actually got a gate across. That's, that's locked off. So I think that southern area is their primary access point. But as part of the subdivision, um, there would be a, a requirement to actually extend the service road and fully, um, construct that, that bulb at the end of the cul-de-sac in order to give access to that parcel.
That makes more sense. You good with that? You have anymore? Any other questions? Not seeing any other questions? Again, we don't have anybody else here for applicants or anybody for or against, so I will just go down and close the public hearing. So on that, the public hearings for today are closed. We'll go into the, back into the agenda. The minutes from last one. Blaine? Just moving the minutes. Any questions or comments, Autumn? Not seeing any? Vote? That's carried. Go to six point one. Terrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bylaw twenty twenty-two eleven, land use amendment, second and third reading. The, uh, public hearing just concluded. Uh, administration's recommendation is refusal, refusal, defeat the, uh, the bylaw as it does not comply with the tri-IDP.
Okay, can I get somebody to move second? Robin, you have the floor. Do you want any comment?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Um, I, I tend to fall in line with Shane on this one right here. I think that when we look at decisions that we make, what is the most reasonable or most valuable and best use of that land? And in this case, I don't think that that would be commercial or industrial. I think that from a residential standpoint, it fits. I do hear the concern of the planner with regards to, um, conflicting uses and, and at what point do we draw the line? And I believe that if we were to be considering this south of this development where we're getting closer to, I would be in a different position. I think that by not considering this, we're, we're, you know, basically sterilizing that piece. And I don't think that it really impacts, uh, the intended, you know, and intent of the area. I, I do understand what Jeffrey was talking about with regards to compounding. Um, but I think that that just comes down to us recognizing what this parcel is, is providing and what it's not. And I don't see a conflict with it, so.
Anybody else? Richard?
I, I agree, common sense is something that we have to look at or use. Uh, the struggle here is the fact that we have bylaws in place. Um, the IDP is, is there for a reason. Um, the timing is probably off a bit. We, we are hoping down the road to do some changes in that, uh, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? The distance from Redcliffe out so that we had, we would have absolute control over this area instead of having to deal with the other municipalities in the IDP, uh, system. Would it be a better, would the timing be better and would it make, would it be less hassle? Less headaches to make it work if this came back at another time when the IDP boundaries may be reestablished? It's just, to go against the bylaws is, is a real big challenge. Because it does usually bite us down the road.
Blaine?
Well, I agree with both Richard and Robin and Shane about, about the bylaws and how they're dealt with. But as I look at this piece, this parcel here, I really think there should have been more of a consideration done when the IDP was drawn up. Those other country residential lots were already there. Yeah, I'm having trouble with making that decision myself, but I, I, I really kind of think that, uh, common sense probably needs to prevail in, in this situation.
Okay, we have, uh, everybody's got good valid points here and common sense should prevail, but we have, we have a bylaw that's in place. The other thing you guys, we gotta, we're upholding this bylaw. We have lots of other people that have wanted us to change our opinions and change and do other things in other areas because they don't like the IDP. And we've never done it. We've always followed the IDP. It's kind of like the Bible. We have to follow that. If we open up a can of worms and do this one thing, that door is gonna be lined up with other people that we've turned down in the past saying, you guys did it for them. We want to do it for, you to do it for us. And that's a pretty long list. Jeffrey can probably run that off for quite a while here, so. I know we don't agree with it. I don't agree with it. I think this is a common sense thing that should, we should allow it. But we're stuck with a bylaw that we have to follow. And right now, we're trying to open that up and look at it. If we go against what our bylaw is, it's not gonna help us when it comes time to renegotiate the boundaries on this other. Because we're basically saying we don't care, we're doing what we want. So there's lots to think about. I agree with Shane. I agree with what Robin's saying. Hey, this one's way out there. Sometimes those way out there ones fall into, holy cow, it's still under this whole area. So that's all I'm gonna say on it here. Blaine, and then Kayleen.
Okay, now, and I, I do fully understand that a hundred percent. So is it, my understanding that IDP is gonna be looked, looked at and revisited, is there an opportunity for this piece to be looked at and changed down the road?
I don't know where this falls in that. Kayleen, can you help with that?
So the way that our, the county's municipal development plan is drafted is that it, it talks specifically about collaboration and, and trust between adjacent municipalities. And so what it says is that we will follow any of the, the requirements in terms of amending the IDP that's identified within that document. So as part of the IDP review, should the, the city, the town and, and the county establish that there is a review needed, then certainly perhaps there could be a, a discussion about this area as well. That would be the, the appropriate platform.
Go ahead.
They could reapply after certain, is it six months, a year, two years, three years, or after we change? If we get the IDP changed.
So it's a six-month waiting period if the application does not comply with the bylaw. So if the IDP were to be amended and perhaps allow for continuation of multi-parcel, then it would then comply, which we could accept an application for.
Immediately, yeah, if it changed. Robin?
So if we send this out to the city and to the town and they have no objections to it, why do we? That was a quick trigger. That handle went up like a, like a gopher hop.
You should know you're on the ICF committee.
No, that's, that's, that's my, my question though is, is that with this right here, we, we put it out to them, we, we get this back. Why, why are they not making a statement, just even reiterating as James Johansson and Kent Schneider used to all the time when they were at the city and the town?
Jeffrey?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I don't think that, and I can't speak for the Town of Redcliffe or the City of Medicine Hat as to why they didn't comment. However, if I had to guess, I would say, suggest that they probably don't care because uh, this is far enough out from, in, from their, uh, um, jurisdictional boundaries that it's not really gonna impact their annexation or their future growth and expansion concerns. So for that reason, that's maybe one of the reasons why they didn't comment, but again, we don't know for sure what the exact reason was. Really, this impacts Cypress County. We're the ones that identified that this is where the commercial and industrial area should be situated. So by allowing more non-compatible, uh, development into an area, uh, it really impacts Cypress County the most, not the city or the town. So if we want to have conflicting uses which might prohibit or, or prevent or make it more challenging for, uh, commercial and industrial development to come into this area, I guess that's up to us as, as our own decision-making. But I can, I was mentioning to Kayleen that, um, in approximately, I want to say two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, um, along Highway five twenty-four where there were some established, uh, industrial businesses that were doing relatively well at that time wanted to grow and expand. And they were immediately south of this multi-parcel subdivision. And the owners, there were all, the acreage owners in this multi-parcel subdivision were in strong objection to allowing the industrial development to grow and expand because it was going to impact their enjoyment of their acreages. Now, so that's, that's, I guess, why I'm making this comment is the fact that it really affects Cypress County. If we want to pick and choose where we, where we, where we want to identify where certain develop, types of uses and developments occur, I guess that's up to Cypress County and probably the Town of Redcliffe and the City of Medicine Hat will say, well, really, it, it, it impacts you more than it impacts us. So that, you know, so that's something that could be factored into any future amendments to the tri-area IDP. But really, um, that's what we have to be, I guess, concerned with the most is where do we want to allow our, our appropriate uses for different types of development so that has the least amount of impact or creates a little bit of buffer distance between these non-compatible types so that both can, you know, exist and, and sustain themselves and be, you know, desirable going forward.
Okay, just, just before you go here, there's two things that came up over on this side with staff. And one is, maybe they just don't care. That's why there is no comment. And the other one was Kayleen said, maybe they trust that we follow the bylaw. So they felt they didn't have to send that in as a possible answer, too. So there's two ways that could be read. Richard?
If, if we don't follow that, excuse me, if we don't follow the bylaw, uh, my phone's not gonna quit ringing because I have the area south of Medicine Hat and I have the area to the west. And there is numerous people that want to do something with, uh, to subdivide those lots, to get changes and stuff in. And the IDP, we use that as, as one of the reasons that, no, we, we cannot subdivide. We cannot let you put an acreage there. So, um, like, everything we do's got repercussions and some of them are a long ways down the road, but this one will happen this afternoon, so. I, I just agree. I agree with common sense and, and back at, at the time the IDP was developed, you know, this, well, that's a great area to, uh, go commercial because it has highway access. It's, it's got everything going for it. And, and maybe with the way the economy's changed and a few other things, we can revisit it, but we have a bylaw in place, so.
Fortunately, it's bad timing for this. Okay, I have a motion on the floor for second reading. Is there any more comments? The motion is for second reading. So if you vote yes, it's gonna go through. If you vote no, it stops it. Just so you understand what. Okay, any other questions? You understand? Okay, so normally when we go for bylaw, if you vote yes, the bylaw will go through. If you want to defeat it, you have to vote no for it not to go through. Any other questions or comments? It isn't a good one. It's not, it's against common sense to do this, but. Okay, I'm calling for the vote on second reading. Okay, that's not carried. That is defeated. Sorry. Okay, we're on, uh, twenty twenty-two twelve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, before you is, uh, bylaw twenty twenty-two twelve, land use amendment, second and third reading. The, uh, uh, public hearing just concluded. The administration recommends to proceed with second and third reading.
Thank you, Terrell. Keith's gonna move second. Any questions on this one? Go ahead, Keith.
So from our discussion in the public hearing, the road comes in from the south. Is there a thought of putting the road access through the middle then in developing that part? And, and my second question would be, how many, um, lots are gonna go into this? How many, how many, what's the thought of how many residences or how many, uh, parcels is this gonna be divided up into? Carrie?
So the intention as a condition of the subdivision approval and at the discretion of the Planning Commission, the primary access point into that proposed subdivision would be the internal access road with the cul-de-sac turnaround. However, that private access drive is not constructed to the end of the bulb. So the, the developer of the subdivision would have to construct a, an extension of that road to give that access. So whether we're able to kind of compel the landowner to perhaps negotiate with SMIR to turn over that portion of the sliver of land that's further to the south and adjacent to the canal, that would be a, a discussion we'd have to have with the landowner. But the intent would be that they'd be, they'd be using that internal service road. In terms of the number of lots, I'll just wait till they're finished. Um, in terms of the, the number of lots, we would be looking at the, the one proposed lot due to the Alberta Transportation Highway Corridor that goes through there. Essentially, the, the top two lots that you see as block Y and block A, those two lots are essentially sterilized. Um, they won't be able to get a, a permit from Alberta Transportation to actually build on them because it would be impacting the, the future highway. So likewise, that would be similar to the, the north side of that parcel. So it would leave about six acres for the owner to develop on for one parcel.
Any other questions on that, Keith? Is it making sense to you there?
Just a point I cleared it then. The, the future requirements for the highway would come right on the north part of that.
Would you mind pulling up that map once more, Leslie Ann, on the report? There was the, the transport portion. Thank you. Yeah. So essentially, what you see there is you see the, the future footprint of the, the highway. Thanks, Jeffrey. So this would be the, the southerly extent of AT's future highway right-of-way which in turn would effectively kind of sterilize these three lots because they would be impacted by that future highway right-of-way. So currently, right now, there's two developed residences on the south side. And then the landowner would propose to essentially develop this southern portion.
So it'll just be one house?
Correct. Correct.
Any other questions? Not seeing any other questions? I'll ask for the vote. Okay, that's carried. Shane's going to move third. No questions? Vote. That'd be me. It's carried anyhow. I'm on a no vote today. Okay, seven point one. Terrell Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, before council is the end of April operating update. It starts on page thirty-one with subsequent information to follow. Uh, is there any questions?
Thank you, Terrell Lynn. Does anybody have any questions on the report? Richard's going to move the report? Not seeing any questions? Vote. There we go. Carried. My first day. Don't give me a hard time, you guys. CAO report, Terrell Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, on page fifty-eight. And to follow is the CAO report. Um, is there any questions? I believe our Director of Public Works has a couple of things just to, to add that we're not included in the report.
Okay, go ahead, Kim.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. Is that we are, uh, we started our, um, our oiling program. And one of the projects, because we wanted to bring it to council, is a fairly large project, is we're having some segregation on the, uh, on the hill on Range Road seventy. And so that will be one of the projects that we'll be tackling in the next couple of weeks. Um, also Range Road seventy north of Highway three. That's where, uh, Councilor Bossler pointed out, uh, there's some, uh, some degradation of the asphalt there. And, um, and then we're also going to be repairing some of the, uh, we're starting off in the seven persons area. That's usually where we start after seeding. And then we start the rotation with the oiling program. But just wanted everybody to be aware, I didn't put, this is all what happened in the past and I'm trying to get in front of what's happening in the future for, for these projects anyway.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. Somebody want to move their report? Dustin? Do you have any questions, Dustin? Shane? Yeah, go ahead.
Out for tender? I thought that's why we were buying fleet number U nine-three-zero-eight-two, so we could do it ourselves. So I was just curious why it's going out to tender.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. That after careful examination, that trail has, is seriously segregated, like it's actually, there's some big lips where it's actually dropped. And, uh, with that, part of that trail is in AT's right-of-way, so that's, we've been working with AT on that because at the time when we built the trail, the secondary highways were under due care of control of the county at the time. And, uh, and the base, a large partial, portion of that was going into the base. And so when we're originally talking about doing that work, it was doing the work with all the part that's in Cypress County's control, but now we're working with the base to make sure the whole trail is rehabbed.
So, but the main push behind the fleet number U nine-three-zero-eight-two was to use it on that piece. And that's, we're talking at infr- infrared heater there because it's over a hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment to repair asphalt where we don't have a whole bunch of highways. So I mean, that's where, when we approved it, we were going to use it there to, so we, that's one way of getting our money back out of the machine. Otherwise, is it really, that machine really necessary because we don't have a whole bunch of highways to use that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. Um, we, we haven't purchased that machine yet. And it was, and it was coming in right around that sixty-eight thousand dollar mark. And, uh, that was one of the uses for it, was for the trails, but it would be for any kind of pothole repair that, especially outside of our summer season. It's because you can repair anything. It creates, uh, pothole repairs for seasons instead of three or two even. And we are, uh, we are scheduled to use that. We're going to try it out on the, on the, um, tennis courts because we have three tennis courts that are totally, uh, transitional cracking and alligator. So we're going to try it there. We actually have a long list of stuff, uh, to work on with this. And the reason why this got jumped up is because of the conversations with the base.
Okay, no, it's just from, why I'm questioning that machine so much is from past experience trying to use one. And it, it didn't work. So that's why I'm questioning, but technology has changed in the, since that time.
Any other questions? Michelle?
So just because you can't use that piece of equipment on this particular trail just because it's so bad, you should, like, if there's pothole repairs on any of the other trails, you'll still be able to use it for that, right?
Yeah, it'll make a great piece for doing, for doing the minor repairs. After an examination of this trail, we'd be basically moving it in tandem because this trail is in so bad of shape. Like it's, uh, well, it was built thirty-five years ago, so it's. Yeah, and the land is settling, so. Yep.
Richard?
Uh, just for information, the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant app was submitted to the Canadian Community Revitalization Fund. Uh, it's a federal one. And that is for the library in Urban. We've applied and fingers and toes are crossed, so.
Boy, he's like a dog with a bone, eh? Any other questions for Terrell Lynn? I'm not seeing any other questions. Who, Richard was moving this, wasn't he? Dustin, sorry. Vote. Okay, that's carried. So we'll go on to the Reeve and Councillors' reports. So I'm, I've got some, two things for my report. One is, and I proofread it and it's my fault. The, uh, Siski Nations was supposed to be three billion, not one point three, that, that was, uh, given to them. And then there's one that I missed on here and that was our meeting with the Southfield Base with the commander. Richard and I and Keith went to that one. It was very well received out there. Had a great meeting with them. Didn't I say Terrell? Oh, Terrell Lynn was there too. She's so quiet, we don't even notice her. Always good. We had a lot of discussion about the roads and the water. They're actually looking into comparing it to Alberta standards for us. So if they could change it with a couple of small modifications, they would be interested in doing it and then we wouldn't have to worry about it. We would have potable water for, for Southfield. So they're, they are interested in doing long-term deal with us there for the water. Fire was good. They're, they're excellent and happy with the fire. I think that was it. The rest of the councillors can add something to it if, Terrell Lynn, did you want to add something? No trail? Yeah. Yeah, that, yeah, that was their highlight. They were. Yeah, speed limits were discussed for the, going through, not Ralston, going through the base part there for that crosswalk, yeah. Okay, that's it for my report. I'll start with Keith. We'll come around. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, thanks. I just wanted to clarify one point here under the Grant Hunter update. Um, a little bit of concern, I think, in alignment with what you expressed in with regards to his statement on the municipalities covering the risk of reclamation on solar and wind projects?
Not covering.
Yeah.
Reclaiming for it.
What's that saying?
Arguing for it. Not covering it.
Implementing reclamation practices and funds.
Yeah.
So indicated it was the role and responsibility of municipal councils to implement reclamation practices and funds for the wind and solar companies when approving projects. So I, I, I'm glad that you raised the, the concern that you did with regards to AUC. What was his feedback on that? Because it, it does sound like he's implying that the risk is being downloaded to municipalities.
That's exactly what he was implying. And his, his rebuttal on it was, well, we're trying to get rid of red tape. No, that's all he said. I want to get rid, we're trying to get rid of red tape, so we don't want to take care of that. I came back and said, this is where you guys should be involved in the red tape, not us. That's, this is stuff. But yeah, it was, I think the other municipalities were happy that I spoke up, but I, I couldn't take what he was saying there. Because how many times have we asked when they come in, sitting right there, what's your reclamation? What's your decommission? We ask and we're told to shut up. It's none of our business. And he was saying, make it our business. It's ridiculous.
Is that maybe something that we want to consider even as a resolution for RMA?
That would be something we should possibly.
That's, that's a big, that's a big deal.
That is a huge deal.
Yeah.
I will talk to.
This has been a longstanding issue for a decade, the low reclamation. So we could, like, utilize previous, uh, resolutions and add to it. Because now the new words like red tape reduction, that sort of thing, so we have to add those things in there, but there's been resolutions going to the RMA, AMD and CAG, and in regards to lack of provincial policy on reclamation for, for, and you're correct on that, Rob, because now we have an M L A telling us to, that we need to do this. We never had that before. So this should go to RMA as. Even as awareness that this is what they're saying.
Yeah. We'll look at it. I, you're right. I might actually put a call through to Paul later if that's what you guys want, you know? Dustin?
Should maybe seek a little clarity from, from his office too, is, before we even go, if that is what they're saying.
That's what he said.
But did he misspeak or is, what, let's maybe seek some clarity even from him and just see before we waste our time doing it because, but if that is the case, like, we got to get on that with two feet.
Steve?
So I'll, I'll, um, revisit a comment that was made in twenty-fourteen when we had arranged a farming smarter, how to negotiate your green energy lease. And what was determined was in the oil field, we have a connectivity to the, uh, access, surface access legislation and the ability for board orders. These green projects have none of that. So there's no, uh, there's no, nothing mandatory to say that you need to take these wind towers. Uh, there was also a comment made that day where they said, well, that's fine. We'll take them down and recycle it and we'll pull the copper and, and sell it. But, uh, at that stage, when there is a defunct, uh, wind energy, it's going to work through the Bankruptcy and Insolvency Act. So there's going to be quite a lot of steps, like when you see an oil field company go, uh, go bankrupt. Uh, they go to receiver and sometimes it sits with that receiver until the bank's empty. And that's probably six or seven years type time. Um, with the surface access, there's also the orphaned wells, so the AUC doesn't have any back door for these projects. The energy, the oil and gas industry has a back door, orphaned wells, these types of things. So. We had AC, AUC in the room and somebody asked the question to me, well, who's responsible for the taxes? And our, we had two delegates from the AUC. And I looked at them and I said, well, AUC, I said, they would know that answer. In the case of a defunct green energy project, who would be the operator? And I, there was two shoulder shrug, shrugs. They didn't know. Well, it was them because they issued the permit, uh, or the, uh, the regulated property. It would, they would operate that defunct green energy project. They just didn't know it yet. So there's, there's a, I think the bigger picture here, perhaps that resolution would be something in the form of a, of an orphaned well, but an orphaned energy project, something to that effect, might be the, the, really getting at the root of the problem, but something we've been thinking about and talking about for, for some years now, but as Terrell Lynn mentioned.
Uh, Michelle?
I have a different subject. I'm, we're, we'd like to hear more about the, um, government saying that they want to pass a bill that quorum wouldn't be needed?
Yeah.
What is that all about?
It wasn't discussed very much. It was just brought up that that's what is in the House right now and that's what they're trying to get is they don't need quorum in there to, to pass anything. Same as they don't need, uh, any minister or anybody of cabinet can make, uh, a motion to go into, to call it a season and wait till September to go back. There's some messed up stuff going in there. That's way above our pay grade, I think, but.
That should be the FCM.
Yeah. Have you heard anything on it, Rob? I was shocked when, when Martin brought it out and then when Glenn Mott's brought the other one out, it was like, whoo. They will have complete control of everything if that goes through. And I, and like Martin Shield said, he doesn't believe that the people that are voting on this don't understand what quorum is. They don't realize what, they just think, well, you got enough people there, just go ahead and vote on stuff. They don't understand what it's all about, so. It's scary. If it gets through, it's very scary. Shane, get that image out of your mind. Oh, no. Okay, we're going back to councillors' reports here. Off track. Keith, we'll start with you.
Okay, so the only thing I did extra other than council was go to the Southfield, uh, meeting with the base.
Michelle?
Um, I had M P C meeting, Cypress View, I went, I had policy meeting, I think, since last one and, um, wait and sign checks. And I think, oh, yeah, that was about it since the last meeting.
Dustin? Sitting on a tractor?
Well, I was just thinking, all I've been doing is sitting on a tractor, but we did have, uh, um, Jesus, the meeting I'm trying to think of, right after council, last meeting. And, uh.
ICF.
ICF meeting right after council, so. We can talk about that in close if there's any questions.
Okay.
Pretty quiet in my area, not much going on. Didn't have any meetings other than council meetings. Took a few calls from rate payers. That's about it.
Shane?
Yeah, I had no meetings, just some concerned stuff on rate from rate peers and pretty quiet this last two weeks. Busy.
Lloyd?
Mine was, uh, pretty quiet too, besides the regular meetings and, uh, the Planning Commission meeting and fielding.
the planning commission meeting and fielding, three or four phone calls from taxpayers. That's about it.
Robin.
Yeah, I had the ICF meeting with Dustin and Jeffrey and Kailene, um, which was, was good. The, I guess this last week I had a call, uh, I think Dan, he reached out to you as well from Craig. Um, with regards to the current stat, status of drought and the concern of drought moving into the summer. Um, Craig from Short Grass Ranches is who I'm talking about. Um, and what the county's position on it was and whether we were prepared to declare a local state of emergency. Uh, if we weren't to get some rain and we had rain the next day, I had a couple tents at my place. And within about eight hours, it was blowing dust again. But, um, I had, uh, you know, not really thought about much about it. So I've made a couple of different calls to different people. Paul McLaughlin included, just to see if there were other, uh, municipalities that were kind of looking at it. And what, um, was mentioned to me by Paul, um, was the fact that we need to be ready to do something if need be, because last year we were a little bit, and by we, the collective we of rural municipalities were a little bit behind. And Montana ended up snapping up a whole bunch of the, uh, the, the feed and all that different stuff. And so, um, he has forwarded me the RMA, uh, kind of process on declaring. And they have this package and with, uh, I'll forward that on to Terrell Lynn. What, you have it already? Okay, perfect. Yeah.
So I was just gonna say that's coming up in camera. We have that information.
Okay, perfect. Yeah. So that was, that was really the, the main thing then. Worked on that for a few hours. Other than that, pretty quiet.
Richard.
Uh, that meeting that I attended with you and Keith and Terrell Lynn at Ralston, we, we had quite a great conversation with the base commander. Uh, covered all those topics you talked about. Uh, when I was standing there talking to him by myself, we did talk about the, uh, base or the, the library in Ralston. When, uh, the British left there a year ago or more, or, or the large part of it. They did cut back on the funding to the library and it, it hurt them pretty bad. And then we stepped up and, uh, gave them some additional funding to help them out. So that, uh, that was recognized by him pretty fast because, uh, they do place a pretty high priority on that, uh, library. On Saturday, May fourteenth, participated in the seven persons parade. Took my car out and, or my wife's car, I guess, put Cypress County stickers on and had to put some flowers on this side. You couldn't just go in there bare bones. And anyway, it was great. Good to always talk to people. Um, I have a neighbor down the road, Nicole Newbauer. She actually has land out by Blaine's place, but, uh, she's only about half mile from me. So anyway, phone call and, um, asked us if we could be proactive on, uh, if this drought continues. That we could, uh, encourage the people in Edmonton to look at that program again where there can, if I get this wrong, defer the income on selling their cattle. Does that sound right? Yep. Okay. So that's federal. Okay. But if we could, uh, at least be aware of it and maybe not wait till afterwards. Okay. But I understand you say there's something else coming up. So I'm good on that. And, and she'll be very happy to, to know that. Um, tomorrow, Terrell Lynn and I are traveling up to the suffield base. We've been invited, we've been invited to participate, or the county has, in their seventieth anniversary for the fire department. So, um, uh, Terrell Lynn has decided, well, Dan, Dan can't make it. And Terrell Lynn has decided to go up there, even though it is her birthday tomorrow. So it might be tend, tempted to hum a little bit of happy birthday on the trip up tomorrow. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Somebody want to move their reports? Michelle? Any questions? I don't know. We're waiting for you. That's carried. Okay. We're going to take a quick five minute break. And then when we come back, I have to go back to seven point one, cause a counselor forgot his notes and just found his question. It's not even Lloyd. Imagine that. Meeting back to order. And now I'm going to zip back to seven point one, cause our beloved question dude has a couple that he forgot about.
Yes, sorry. I apologize, Mr. Chairman, staff, fellow counselors. But I had a few questions. In the expenses, I noticed there's three. To the Urban Hotel under I for catering. What, what are them dudes or what's happened in there that is just not going to a bros branding or something down there? Okay. All three. All right.
That's good they're showing up. Yeah.
Well, no, I just, I wanted to know. And another thing, I know I'm getting old and things have changed.
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit. But back in my days, when we wanted to park in a gravel pit, we didn't have to pay gravel site rental. Now I see in two incidents, we're paying $500 for gravel site rental. So, I mean, my days, we just parked in a gravel pit and we didn't pay no rental. But what, what is that?
Can you tell me the two names on there?
There is a new Keith and a Keith, uh, Keith Rats, Keith Rat. One is, uh, yeah, Keith Rats, gravel site rental.
Yep. Okay. Now. Yep. So with their contracts, this was their old contract when we had, um, through the chair, sorry. Uh, when we reviewed this a couple of years ago, we talked about the reclamation and all that kind of stuff. Um, so back in the old contract, it was that they paid, we paid them 50 cents. Uh, we reclaimate, did the reclamation. It was a dollar. They did the reclamation. And part of that contract also had a, a $500 a year pad rental or a lease pit rental. And so that was, that was part of the old contract. And so these are the existing contracts that we haven't reverted. They're still, we're honoring them because we, they, we still had a couple of years left on them. But the other ones we've switched and people are gladly to, to, to not have the $500, uh, fee to know that they're, we're doing the reclamation as per council.
Yeah, no, I was just curious on that. Sorry about that. That was my two questions I had.
That's okay. I shouldn't have rushed you, rushed you earlier.
I know.
I know what your age, you're getting a little slower on stuff. So.
Yes.
Richard's going, how come he's not bugging us today? What's going on? Okay. You get that? Shane?
Yep, that was the two.
All right. Okay. We're on the 10.1. Terrell Lynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Grayburn, uh, Raw Water Pipeline Society request, uh, page 69. The recommended motion is a two parter that council authorize a transition of water license, uh, AP approval ID forty-five, seven, ninety-nine and priority nineteen oh six, oh eight, oh two, zero, zero, one, two hundred and ninety-five acre feet to the Grayburn Water Pipeline Society. And that council transferred the infrastructure of the water pipeline of, to the Grayburn Raw Water Pipeline Society. Uh, there is substantial background information. Uh, there is a, on page seventy-one, uh, the signed letter from the president, Keith Reiser. And subsequent to that is, uh, the members of the, uh, the, uh, society in favor of this transition. The, uh, Grayburn, uh, uh, water line is, uh, is not on our tangible capital asset listing. So therefore a transition of asset will not have a financial implication. And administration recommends the, uh, the above recommended motion. This, uh, process has been a decade in the making and administration, uh, wholeheartedly supports this request.
Thank you. Lloyd.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion we accept this. And I know everybody, uh, is aware of how long this has been going on. And, uh, the good work from our staff for dealing with it. And I've had about three conversations with the president, uh, Keith Reiser there about this. And, uh, they're fully hardly want this line. They want the water. And they're willing to do it and, uh, apply for their license. So I would like, and I really think that we should, uh, help them along and let them have it.
Okay. Any other questions on it? Not seeing any. What was the motion? I'm trying to, I'm lost. I can't find it.
Just two. So the first one is to transfer the license and then the second one is transfer the infrastructure.
Okay. Sixty-eight, sixty-nine. Close. Keith?
Okay. I, I need some background on this. Where, where does the line originate? Where does it end up? Um, uh, where, what's it for?
Terrell, you want to run with it? Turn your mic off, Keith.
So back in the day, there was a reservoir up in the Grayburn area that, uh, and a, a pipeline that sent water to the Hamlet of Walsh. That was, so it was, uh, an industrial, originally the, the license was an industrial license, water license for CP. It was transferred for municipal purposes, uh, because that was, uh, CP didn't need that water source anymore and we needed it for the Hamlet. So it was utilized until 2016. In 2016, uh, the regional, uh, transmission line went from, from here out to, to Walsh. So that water is no longer needed. Uh, there's about sixteen members, give or take of it, of the society. And, uh, over the years they've been added on and, uh, the county has no use for that, that water, water license.
We're transferring the one we don't need to them.
They've been using it for the last few years, but they wanted to have it taken over in their name so that they can do what they want with it. Cause they're restricted right now for what we have for covenants on the contract. Pretty much sums it up. Any other questions on it? Not seeing any. I will ask for the vote. Not seeing any, I will ask for the vote. Did you miss some? So it's nine, well, it's carried, but, okay. Ingrid? Don't say it, ten point two. Oh, sorry, second part. Michelle, you're moving the second part of it?
Yes, I will move the council transfer the infrastructure and water line, of the water line to Grayburn.
Water rights, yeah. Alright, any questions on it? Vote. Carried. That was a touchy one, you had to make sure that one went through. Ten point two, Terlen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, land use, uh, site coverage. Uh, Reeve Hamilton asked this to be on the agenda and I apologize, I did not have time to, uh, to do the RFD. Um, I believe that Reeve Hamilton would like to request administration to look into the site coverage under our land use bylaw. It's at thirty percent right now. And, uh, ask, and it's been, it was discussed too, when the discussions of the land use bylaw took place. Um, however, uh, because people are looking at doing, uh, uh, zero scapeing and, and those sort of landscaping to reduce water. Um, our land use bylaw has limitations to that. So Reeve Hamilton would like to request, I believe, uh, that administration, uh, proceeds with looking into, into the, the site coverage concerns.
Sorry, there's no RFD on it. We discussed it a week or so ago and when we were going over the agenda, we, yep, everything's good. And then the next day was like, oh, we forgot this, so. So how it came forward is we have a couple of people in Dunmore here that just wanna put decorative rock in their yard and get rid of the grass because they don't wanna pay with big water bills and all that. But the way the, the bylaw is written, they can't do it because that, that acts as a coverage as soon as you put the gravel down. And to me, if it's a non, non-packed rock, that's a decorative rock, it's still gonna filter through and water's gonna maintain on your property. So, it's just, we need to get staff to look into that bylaw and re-evaluate on how it needs to be done. Because if we could get everybody in Dunmore to put a rock down in their water bill, went down for the city every year, that would be awesome too. Because we subsidize that so badly. We should be able to, if somebody wants to have their whole yard rock, they should be able to do it, but. Well, it, the, it's understandable because it's less work for some of the older people too. They don't have to worry about going and mowing the lawn and that. Right, Richard? But I need somebody to make a motion for that so we can discuss it. Blaine, thank you, to bring back, Michelle, you had your hand up and.
No, I was just gonna make a motion.
Dustin, you had your hand up? Oh. Shane always has his hand up. Go ahead, Shane, what would you like to say, sir?
It's interesting you've said that rock, see, but a lot of people put a plastic underneath that rock. So the weeds and that come up. So the water will not, will not go through, it will drain off.
Yep, so.
I'm just, yeah, because.
Yep.
I'm just going from my mom and dad's house in Maple Creek, that's, is all rock, but we got plastic underneath. So it is all shedding, it's not soaking in.
Yep. So I'm just. And that'd be part of the bylaw that they'd have to bring back to allow that to be able to soak in. So you put the proper cloth underneath the, but again, it's gotta be, they need a motion from here in order to even open it up and look at it, so that's.
That was one of my concerns, that people do that.
Yep. Uh, Richard, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I see nothing but positive out of this because I am talking about desert bloom in my area. Um, there's also paving stones that are permeable, is that the right word? Where the water would soak through and that would also help on the amount of, uh, uh, grass that needs to be watered, so.
Kayleen?
Oh. It is a major issue too, that I know, um, the development officer struggles with in terms of requests for compliances. So when we have real property reports coming in from surveyors, there isn't necessarily a, an established standard in terms of what is contemplated as site coverage. So what happens is they're including all gravelled areas. You might have some landowners that use gravel for landscaping purposes, but then on the flip side, you have landowners that gravel their, their whole backyard to use it as a parking pad. Right, so what is the, what is the purpose? And same thing with paving stones, they want zero maintenance. It's one thing to have a paving stone walkway, it's another thing to put paving stones in your entire backyard. Right, so those things have an effect. So I think from, from planning and development's perspective, we'd be in, in full support of reviewing that for sure.
Perfect. And maybe our coverage is too much or not enough or all that needs to be looked at. Uh, Michelle and then Steve.
I was just gonna say, I think this is a genius idea. Because anything we can do to conserve or use less water, I think is, going forward is just a good thing for the whole planet.
Steve?
And just as, uh, I'll share some work that Terlen's having us do as a, as a team. Uh, it's to start to review those water rates for next year's master rates. And, and part of the, what we identified as a team was, uh, some of that zero scapeing inability and the permeability. And perhaps even having a standard to make sure it, it does drain, the, the concerns that were raised. Um, so far, we're, we're early on in that, but it almost could be to the point where there could be the potential for a, a subsidy or an agreement to, to be able to grant or, or finance even that zero scapeing. Just to balance out the cost of water versus the cost of rock and that type of thing, but.
Perfect, any more questions on it or? Uh, Blaine made the motion for staff to bring back. Good, alright, vote. Perfect, carried. Uh, have a good day, Keith. Eleven point one unfinished business.
So that.
That one's not till.
Yeah, that gentleman is coming in at one, Mr. Chairman.
Why not put the glasses back on? Uh, so we can go in closed and do the RCMP and the legal, I guess. Keith's gonna make the motion to go in closed. Vote.
Guy taking pictures of you, he's, he was trying to get the glare off the top there so he could take the picture, so. Alright, only one can use a mic at a time, and the floor is yours. When you're done, we'll ask you questions if there is any.
So, this is our presentation about the Dunmore biking area by me, Hudson Mastel, Kona Sodchuk, William Kizikowicz, Roland Vannersprit, Kyler Millington, and Evan Rieger. Okay, how, how do you work this?
Well, the battery, it did just.
Are you gonna move it for him, Les? There you go.
Okay, background, we would like to work with the community to be able to build an area that everybody can agree on. We have requested to build in a new area because where we were before got shut down due to land ownership changing.
Les? You can't leave your chair now, you gotta move it.
Okay, so this is the location that we talked about with the community council. We don't know exact location, but somewhere around the baseball diamond up there. So that's what we were thinking. So then, this is what we are looking for, we are looking for a po- we're, we are looking for possibility. We are looking for dirt to restart our jumps, the dirt will be used for a run-up to gain speed to the jumps. We will have lots of pellets that we have gathered from before, and that we will make the jumps out of those, and, yeah.
Our vision, the Red Cliff Dirt jumps is a pretty good example of what we are trying to do. Not as big of a platform for the run-up, it's uh, going to be a three-jump line, so ju- three jumps in a row. And then there's gonna be a turn-off to come back to the platform to get our speed.
We will keep our jumps really tidy, if you came out to the last area, we didn't really keep our stuff as clean as we should've. We had wood lying around and stuff, but uh, if we do get this land, we will try to cleave it, keep it as clean as possible.
That's the end of your presentation? Okay, awesome guys.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for these young men? Dustin?
So guys, I really like the idea behind what you wanna do. Now, here's my thought on it, and it's maybe just a little more of a broader scope. Would it be an idea to take and build your jumps like you guys want to? I, I know as council, we usually try to build things a little bit more permanent, so instead out of wood, maybe use a little concrete or whatever it would be, so that it withstands longer. And as well as maybe put in, we've been talking about putting a pump track in Dunmore for a bit of time now. Maybe combining it with that and building something all in the same area?
Uh, yes, that would work, we were kinda thinking about combining the pump track in this into one area.
Okay, so that's what we need for your ask, because a pump track and a track with jumps are two different things, and it's two different insurance prob- issues. So, that's what we have to clarify today, what your ask is for today. Blaine, you had a-
Yeah, so I guess it goes along with what Dustin said, I just have one question, were you planning on having competitions there? Is this just for practicing, or what is your goal for the, for this spot?
Um, for lots of us, for all of our friend group, our biggest goals are to get sponsored and to ride for Red Bull. But, all these jumps are just to get mostly better and just have fun.
Shane?
Okay, under your picture here, that bottom ramp, how high is that? Your takeoff or whatever, right where the arrow is?
Kim can answer that, he built it, I think.
Fourteen feet, I believe that one was, and then there was two tiers, so they don't have the picture of the second tier.
So that, you couldn't make that out of just pellets, that would have to be engineered, for insurance.
That one was engineered, and it's uh, yeah, that went through a whole engineering, and we actually had that whole pump track uh, uh, went through a bike consultant, to make sure.
So is that considered a pump track then, with those jumps in there?
No, that's not, there was a, on the inside, they had the pump track on the inside, and then that's, that's actually a, a mountain bike skills. Cause there's a bunch of logs on the other side where you can ride on a log, so it's a, it's a um, skills development for mountain biking.
Okay, so that's where we gotta define what you guys want today, cause it, two different things, two different costs, two different insurances, so.
Cause yeah, there's a skills park, a mountain bike park, and a pump track. There's three different things, so we need to evaluate the needs.
Yep, so right now, what you guys are coming in for, and our understanding was for a pump track, and that's what was on the motion in previous, that the county would provide a pump track for Hamlets. So we just gotta, we got another question here, but we have to figure out where you wanna go and what you want, what your ask is today. Robin?
Alright boys, I like the uh, I really like the Red Bull as the target, okay, that's good, aim high, right? So, are you guys looking to do big air, is that kinda the idea? Big air and, and kind of freestyle, you know, doing jumps, backflips, spins? Or what?
Not, not backflip, eventually, maybe.
Yeah.
Not, not anytime soon.
But it's the same, it's the same jump though, right, like it's a big air, you know, you're coming off, it might have a steeper lip at the end, but you're, you're gonna be either, you're, you're coming off of a platform into a harder kick, or else you're flying further and you're spinning your bars or whatever, but hearing it, they got, I, I'm, I'm wondering whether or not, like the pump track is a really good way, when you've got young people that are wanting to get started, right? And then out of a hundred kids that are gonna be riding on the pump track, maybe four of you guys are gonna have the courage to jump off of one of those suckers, and maybe one of you guys, you know, in the next five or six years is gonna get Red Bull sniffing around, okay? So, I'm just wondering if, when we look at land for this and development, that we have a big enough piece of land, that we start off with a pump track, and then down the road can have like a phase two, phase three. Because the skills development is probably more important than having big air, right? And, cause if you're doing big air, you know, that, that it's just, it limits how many people kinda thing, right? But you guys, as mentors, how old are you guys? Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen? Fourteen, fifteen, okay? So, you know, you start off with the, with the pump track stuff, and hopefully, you know, you're, you're, you're being leaders by being here. But you can also be kind of a inspiration to some of the younger kids, and, and then it kinda grows from there, right? But, I, I'd like to see enough land that it can kinda be grown into.
I think we have enough land in this area, so. But, again, we gotta figure out what the ask is, cause it's a whole different insurance level that we gotta watch what we're doing here. Richard?
Um, I, I think it's a great idea, I, I have no issues with that. We did talk at, uh, it was either the last council meeting or the one before, that uh, when we talked about the pump track, uh, that we have all that land, all that area, but we need to put a plan together for future growth, just like you said. But we need, we need a, a parking lot that's gonna be big enough to handle the grandpas and grandmas coming to watch, and uh, just, this, uh, what am I looking for, the- All the other infrastructure, yeah. So I, I think this is neat, so we know we need a pump track, we need, you know, we need a, a mountain bike area. I don't know if you guys would've told your mom that you guys were gonna do backflips eventually, but uh, okay, never tell mom, eh? Yeah. Oh yeah, okay. Yeah, and I, and I'm good with that, but I just think we need to, if, if we agree on this thing, then let's, let's put it, let's draw it out where everything is gonna be. The, the parking lot, uh, keep this off to the side a bit, uh, the skills track with the logs and everything else that goes with it. I've been to Fernie numerous times with my grandchildren, and they've got a pretty awesome setup there. How they've spread it out takes quite a bit of an area, but it's very, very well used, so. Um, yeah, definitely, I, I, I think it's great that you guys come forward and did this, it's just, let's make sure we have the whole thing drawn out, what's gonna go in there.
That's where we're going, uh, Michelle and then Dustin.
Thanks for coming, uh, yeah, I kind of agree with Richard, if we're gonna do this, I think, pump track is, is gonna be great for the young kids. I think these guys are probably too old for that, so I think like it should go up in, in intervals, you know what I mean? Like have intermediate, just keep graduating so that they can get there and have enough room for a parking lot.
Dustin?
So, would it be right to say that maybe we should get this group of gentlemen to work with our staff and the community association, and come back with a drawn-up plan for what they would like to see? So, being that Kim's kind of the material matter expert, since he built the one in Red Cliff? And uh, and, and go from, and go from there?
We gotta watch what we do, our staff is pretty busy right now to be designing pump tracks.
I'm, I'm aware, but uh, if we can take and come up with a conceptual design, and then maybe we can go forward from there?
Well, that's not, we'll come up with that, that's different from what we're, this presentation is right now. Do you guys have any more questions for these young gentlemen? Uh, Shane?
So, just curious, on the back of your vision there, on our, our vision, this one in Red Cliff's got one, two, three, four pellet tracks. That's what you guys are looking at too? The same type of thing?
Yeah, so like, and then there's a dirt one just to the right of the smallest one there? And so you can, no, to the right, yeah, right there, and then so you just keep working up and up and up as you get better?
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Okay, do you have another question, Shane?
Red Bull's insane guys, there's some guys in wheelchairs that go off of jumps like that, so, Richard, you still have a chance. Yeah, no, I, I um, I respect what you're saying down with regards to how much time staff has and stuff like that with this. I, I think that it's important that you guys have some guidance with regards to um, kind of visualizing how this works, because I think that you come and sit in front of nine scary people, and you're wanting to make sure that you ask for something just big enough that you can get a yes, but not too big that you get a no. And I think that it's important that with something like this, that you, you think big, and we just try to make sure that it's, it fits within everything. You know, if, if you're looking for a couple counselors to sit down with, I know, I'd be, I'd be game on sitting down with them too, if, if that helps staff out a little bit, with just kinda giving a little bit of, of direction on stuff. Um, with, the only thing that makes me a little bit nervous from a liability standpoint is the big, big jumps. And my question is, is, do you guys, are there any foam pits at all around, or, or like what are some of those? I know you've watched Travis Pastrana and the big bags and airbags and stuff like that. Um, is there anything like that in the area, in the south even, from a training standpoint, that would?
No, there isn't very much, um, things to help with big training jumps, like the airbags. There is one, um, foam pin callary for a bike park, but no, there's not much, um, safety for the jumps that we, um, are building.
Richard?
Um, through the chair to Kim, if, because he was um, in Red Cliff when this was built up there. Um, how did the Red Cliff handle the liability? And, uh, I'm thinking because of this, this isn't a cheap thing to build, uh, must've been used, must've used grant money, like community enhancement funding, or must've been chasing some grants, so if I can just get some clear, some answers on that.
So as Kim previously shared, they had an engineer, uh, build it, and so it'd be to spec. And uh, we can research into how, to how they got funding and where they, where they chose it from. And uh, Kim would have some resources that we could look at, we'd have to, if we wanna go that, to get a, uh, an engineer do an RFP out, or do you wanna sole source it and that sort of thing? So we can bring back the next meeting, some contacts, uh, to start the process. And then that individual may be able to look at, uh, cause the area structure plan type of conceptual design for the remainder of the lens, maybe they would be able to incorporate that as well. But we can bring that back to the, cause it was engineered, and we can look at, at how to fund it as well. And how much it would cost to do something like this, and the upkeep and maintenance too. Insurance, yeah. Oh yes, yeah, and parameters always for risk management is if it's engineered. That's when we do risk management, yeah, that's the top, is looking at the severity, how often it's gonna happen, and have you, have you followed precautions such as engineering and that sort of thing.
Okay, those are details we can get into, th- is there any more questions for the young lads here? Yeah, you can finish off.
Um, my neighbor is, is Curtis Marshall, and he did a lot of work at the Red Cliff Bike Park, and he did lots of trail building in Elkwater, so I bet he would like to help too, so, and he is Curtis Marshall. He, he was very experienced in this field, and I bet he would love to help.
Which we can look into, and I know Curtis too, so we'll be able to talk to him. Just we have to, with being a county, we have to have an actual engineered stamp, so. There's a lot of processes, but you guys did an excellent presentation today, we appreciate you coming in and coming forward to us. It takes a lot of guts to come in and sit there, we've been on both sides of the counter, so we understand. We will look into, uh, we appreciate you guys as bringing in what your ask is now, we understand. Originally it was just a pump track, now you guys are going bigger, so it's something we have to deal with. And like what was said here today, we will give the information brought back to us, and we'll be looking at this at the next meeting in June. And then we can let you know where the details and what's gonna happen from that point in time. Unfortunately, nothing ever moves fast, I know how eager you guys are. Unfortunately, nothing ever moves fast. I know how eager you guys are to go do this, but from a liability perspective, we have to do the proper steps and take care of everything in case somebody gets hurt out there and we don't want anybody to get hurt. So it's got to be built right and done properly. So. Thank you very much for coming in. You guys have a good day. Yep. I did it at forty trying to get a go-kart track. Looking at Darcy going, I don't trust you. What are you thinking there? What are you thinking? That was the problem.
Mr. Chairman, um, so lunch is here and we have a one o'clock.
Yep. So we'll break for lunch right now. Yep, break for lunch.
All right, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call the meeting back to order. All right, so we have our one o'clock delegation. Tara Lynn, did you want to lead with that?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, next on your agenda is water bill refund request. Seven oh one East Street, fifth, sorry, East Fifth Street, Dunmore. The recommended motion is that council deny the request for reimbursement for the water consumption at seven oh one East Fifth Street, Dunmore, as the meter was independently tested and found within acceptable parameters. Mr. Chairman, our Director of Public Works is going to do an overview and then Mr. Sackman is going to share his thoughts.
There you go. I got it.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. So, this was brought to our attention through, uh, through the rate payer. And, uh, in the, in the request was that the meter was faulty. And then there was a request in there about the reimbursement. So, at that time, we sent the meter off to a third party out in Vancouver to get tested. And, uh, it got tested and I know the water consumption here is an astronomical amount. And the provisions that we are given are within the bylaws and stuff. So, that's why the motion is, um, sorry, our recommended motion was to, to, uh, confirm the amount. And, um, uh, we went through a bunch of scenarios of where we could have, where errors could be made. We went through it and examined it and at that time, we determined that there was no, uh, human errors, I should say. And so, that's, uh, and that's why it came back to council on that regard.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Okay, Mr. Sackman, there's a, they told you what button to push there.
Okay. So, you've all seen the letter that we received that bill for five hundred and seventy whatever cubic meters of water. Um, when the technician did come out to test it, um, I wrote down his numbers on the testing. Our meter had a difference of a hundred and thirteen, his had ninety six. When you do the math, that works out to about sixteen and a half percent error. Still wouldn't account for a bill that high. Uh, when they sent the meter off, it was reading, I think, one test was one percent lower instead of sixteen percent higher. So, it kind of tells you right there, the meter's got an intermittent issue of some kind. Um, you know, astronomical amount of water, there's absolutely no way. Uh, the technician, when he came out, if he was here, he could attest, our yard was pretty yellow, the grass, the ground was not muddy. Um, just impossible to use that amount of water. Um, you know, I'd have to drain and fill my hot tub, I think it was four hundred and eighty-two times a month to use that amount of water. Not enough hours in the day to even do that. And again, the yard would be a swamp. A tap running in the house, I've checked with some plumbers, our septic tank and field could handle about three hundred gallons a day. In that two months, that would work out to eighteen thousand gallons we could have put through the septic tank, not a hundred and fifty-one thousand gallons. Again, impossible. Um, you know, we could have filled up, I think it was forty-seven fire trucks. Again, not enough hours in the day to do that off our water hose to use that amount of water. Uh, as far as the testing that goes, uh, I was a little, little upset when I read the, the background on the request for decision. Some of it isn't quite accurate. Um, I never phoned in and canceled the appointment. I was sitting at my house waiting for the technician. He called me and said he was getting delayed, and he asked if he could come first thing in the morning the next day, which I said, fine. I came by a little after eight in the morning. Uh, his measurements, uh, one of the first words out of his mouth is when he went into our basement and goes, "Oh, that's an old meter, I don't, didn't even know any of those were around anymore." Our meter still had the old mechanical style digits instead of the digital display. Um, he says, I've, he said, "How long have you lived there?" I said, "About fifteen, seventeen years." He goes, "Dude, I didn't think we've been using these for probably twenty years already." Uh, it was his decision to change out the meter to the new one. And if I remember how the conversation went, that was even before we even tested. He says, "When we're done, we're going to change it out to a new meter, these shouldn't even be in service anymore." Uh, so when he ran it, ran the test, it was out a little bit, that sixteen and a half percent. Uh, so we, he changed out the meter, so I was a little shocked. It was his decision to change it out, I did not demand a new meter. Uh, that was totally his decision, so I was kind of shocked at the fifty dollar bill for that. Uh, not as shocked as the fifteen hundred dollar water bill, though. Um, you know, we, uh, I, I don't know if you got the information, I sent Teri in this morning. Um, I got it from the, uh, city of Parksville in Ontario, what typical water consumption would be. So, uh, running, uh, just above ground sprinklers, underground sprinklers. Their estimate of cost is a dollar, dollar seventeen an hour for water consumption. You know, a dollar seventeen an hour, again, not enough hours in the, in the month to make a fifteen hundred dollar water bill if we'd had our sprinklers running all the time. But from the pictures you've seen, obviously, we don't water a whole bunch, the grass was pretty darn yellow. Uh, if you actually would have clicked on the, on the thumbnail, you could actually go in and see the, made it, uh, the data from when the picture was taken, it was within a day or two of him out there. Um, we, we did get a new water meter put in. I read the meter reading this morning, so in the ten plus months, we've used a hundred and fifty-two cubic meters. Again, big difference between five hundred and seventy-two in a couple of months. You know, that's according to you guys' website, the average family of two should use about thirty cubic meters. We're at basically thirty point zero one cubic meters a month is what we're averaging. The, the normal amount of water that we should be using. Uh, you know, I don't have a problem paying our water bill, but the right amount is what I want to pay. You know, we've lived there sixteen, seventeen years, it would have been easy enough for someone to look okay. May, June, they've averaged this amount over the last ten, twelve years. That's probably what they used, or pretty darn close. But five hundred and seventy-two cubic meters, it's, it's astronomical. Um, you know, one thing too is kind of funny, now, front counter staff, don't know, well, maybe you got a dripping tap or something. Again, that would make a difference of five or ten dollars a month, not fifteen hundred. What, I get nervous. Uh, you know, one thing too, I'm curious, is if the county actually does any checking on reconciling the city's bill with what they bill at the customers. You know, an error of a hundred and some cubic meters would have probably showed up on, between the difference of the city bill to the county and what the county rebuild. Um, I don't know if there's any policies or if they even check that kind of stuff, but to me, being in business, when I get billed something and I'm billing out, I make sure nothing got missed or nothing got overbilled. Yeah, I guess that's about it.
Okay, um, Tara Lynn, can you answer that question Mr. Sackman just had?
Yeah, we have a process for reconciling water loss and, and water usage.
Okay. Does it, Robin?
That was, that was the question I had written down too, was, you know, when I was with the forty mile gas co-op, we had what we billed out. We had what we rebuilt, um, and it would, you'd usually see a fairly big discrepancy if there was a, a, an issue. Um, during those months, what was, what was our kind of law, I guess, water loss, um, percentage during that time?
Actually, I don't have that exact number, what the water loss number was, but during July and August is, um, and that's one of the reasons why, uh, the Water Utilities Department is very adamant that we use meters when we're doing, um, when we're doing, uh, street sweeping or anything like that, because that's all incorporated, or even fire practices, anything that comes out of a hydrant is basically, is built into that water loss. So, I don't have those numbers in front of me from those two months.
Dustin?
So, the number that were between the two months, it's five hundred and thirty-seven cubic meters, correct? Okay, that's an astronomical amount of water, that's a hundred and eighteen thousand gallons. But that's what a quarter section pivot uses in three hours, that, that is astronomical water. Um, I, that's like seventy-three tanks of my sprayer, I don't even use that much water doing that in a year. So, there, like, there's something wrong on our end here, if that's the case, because that's, that's not right. If you put that much water in a yard, it'd be...
Do you have any questions for Mr. Sackman?
No, I'm just...
Does anybody here have any questions for Mr. Sackman?
I believe Mr. Sackman has something additional to add.
Yeah, sorry about that, I kind of got a little nervous there. Um, I've, I've got extensive background in, in electronics and mechanical instrumentation and stuff. That meter had the old mechanical gauges, uh, now, I don't know if any of you were old enough to remember the cars from the sixties, seventies that had a mechanical odometers. But, uh, but you would, some, a lot of times, the digits would stick. You'd be driving ten miles and the hundred would flip with it. You'd hit a bump and it would work again. You hit a bump again and it would stick, and all of a sudden, your odometer's going up way faster than it should be. You hit a bump again and it wouldn't work. Basically, what hap, I used to repair those. Uh, basically, what happened is they have grease in there, it gets hard and dry. Digit said, "Don't move a whole bunch, will stick to the next one sometimes." And again, you tap it, whatever, it works. That's what I think happened, I, I'm pretty, I'm ninety-nine percent convinced that every time the ten digit moved, the hundred moved with it, or every time the one moved, the ten moved with it, and that would cause, to give you a lot higher reading. That's why everybody went to digital gauges now, so you don't have that issue. Chevy trucks were notorious for that, even into the early nineties, with odometers not working right, with digits sticking.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Keith?
So, what, what's your normal, uh, water usage for those months?
I believe we'd, we'd usually be thirty to forty cubic meters in that area there. We've averaged about thirty cubic meters throughout the year for two months, so.
Yeah, that's average for the year, but this is over the summer months that we're talking, so.
Yeah, I don't have, uh, my old bills, we pay them, we shred them at the end of the year, so. You guys should have records of what we normally pay, though.
Yeah.
Just context, so at my place, I use twenty-five thousand gallons per month. I use, at my place in Irvin, so July and August, I, so July and August, my summer bill was over, was fifty thousand gallons at my place. So, if you're familiar with my yard, that's how much I use.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. And I, well, and I, I own, and I don't water all the time. I don't water, I don't, uh, I, while I'm at work, I don't water, but, uh, but I water when I get, get home. And I, but that's a, that's a, that's a significant amount of water.
Okay, I got to get back to the delegation side here before we have any more questions. Do you have a question for Mr. Sackman? Okay.
So, at no time, you didn't find any water anyplace laying around on your lawn or anyplace, like, no puddles, no floods, no?
Yeah, turn your mic off.
Uh, not at all, we don't even have underground sprinklers, uh, so thinking that there'd be an underground sprinkler issue, uh, you know, that, that was actually the first question they asked you, if you had underground sprinklers, and no, we don't, we water above ground with a hose. Uh, again, you've seen the pictures, how, how yellow our grass was. Uh, again, you know, dropping five hundred and seventy-two cubic meters of water in our yard, we'd have been sinking up to our knees. It would have been a swamp in there.
Except Dunmore's on sand, that's why everybody waters so much. Well, it's, it is high, but does anybody else have any more questions for the delegation? Richard?
Uh, I have to ask, do you have a swimming pool?
No.
No, we have a hot tub, which in May and June of last year, we didn't even drain and empty it, we did that the month before. Um, no swimming pool, and as far as the sand, we actually brought in about three feet of topsoil into our yard, so it's not quite as sandy.
Any chance a neighbor filled his swimming pool and not tied to you?
Yeah, none of our neighbors have swimming pools, um, talking with them, our neighbors' water bills that month were averaging about one eighty to about two sixty. Uh, the difference between their yards is they have a lot more grass than we do, they all have underground sprinklers, and their yards were extremely green compared to what ours was. We actually don't have much lawn in our yard yet, most of it's just, uh, open, open dirt that we're going to be putting some landscaping material in.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Sackman? Not seeing any more questions, okay. Do you have anything to add before we? Okay, thank you very much for bringing it in, sir, we're going to, uh, let you sit over there, and we're going to have a argument and a debate over what's going on. Okay, so I need, I don't have a motion. What was the recommended?
Recommended motion, the council denied the request for reimbursement for the water consumption at seven oh one East, uh, Fifth Street, Dunmore, as the meter was independently tested and found within the acceptable parameters.
Okay, so I need a motion to this, to discuss, we can change that after the fact. Richard?
I'm going to go with the alternative motion that directs administration to reimburse half of the utility bill and waive the fifty dollar fee.
Okay. All right, does anybody want to discuss this, or go with, Michelle?
Well, that's an awful lot of water. I have a pool and have grandchildren, and they broke that pool, and I filled it probably over the same period of time last year, every three days. And my water bill was nowhere near that much money.
Oh, I don't disagree. The digital kind of makes a little more sense now that that came. Or, because as soon as you take that digital out, ship it out to Vancouver, bumping it around in the flight and everything, or the shipping, could have made that thing work again, so. Robin?
Yeah, you know, it, what's tough is that because we sent it off, and then it, it showed that it was working, but the numbers don't make sense. And so, what I like about this approach is that we're recognizing that it doesn't fit, but at the same time, it, it's very difficult to just go and say, "Well, let's write a check for twelve hundred dollars and just assume that nothing." Because we've, there's a track record of something that we checked to make sure that it was good and it was still good. Now, I sure hope that same meter isn't still installed.
No, that's done.
Right?
It's got a new meter, it's all digital now, it's, that's out of service.
That one's, that one is out of service, I just, I think that, I can't, I can't think of anything else that would allow us to do our diligence and at the same time, still be flexible and understanding, so.
Well, I think Richard's motion is fair, because I, I know my wife likes to keep the yard perfectly green over there all summer, and then I hear about it when she gets that six hundred and fifty dollar water bill every two months, so. So, I think we're being fair on if he was watering, that's what it'd be around the ballpark. We have no way of knowing, so doing half is, to me, is fair. Does anybody else have any comments on it? Keith?
Well, I just look at, uh, just a comparison here with Tara Lynn. Uh, fifteen thousand gallons, that's fifty-six cubes. And, uh, to be charged for five hundred and seventy-two, uh, that's ten times the bill, that, I'd be a little upset about it too. So, uh, you know, I'm certainly understanding in, in, in this person's position, so, um, you know, I'm certainly in favor of doing something. To what extent, I, you know, you, you just don't know how far you can go. But I, I realize that this is probably, you know, I understand water, I understand usage, because, uh, you know, we use it all the time on the farm. And if, if a quarter section of irrigation uses this, then, uh, you know, you can't put that kind of amount, that amount of water on a, on a lot in town and not have a, have a real problem, so. Um, that would be my comments.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor for the alternative, which is for us to cover half of the bill and waive the penalty and any late fees. Any questions or comments on it? Do you have a question or?
Okay, so just a question, are we going far enough? That's all I'm, I'm asking.
Well, I think that's the motion that everybody feels comfortable with, I guess we'll find out when we vote with it.
I, I don't know how you go, go farther, because you, you have to make decisions based on what you have. And right now, the crappy part is, is that the information that we have doesn't line up with what common sense is. And, and so, common sense says that this is way too much, but you can't identify and, and set a, a dollar value to bill for because you have nothing to show evidence for what it is. And so, in this right here, it's not saying that we're doing anybody a favor per se, but we're not acknowledging that there was something that was wrong with it, but we're basically saying something wasn't right. And for whatever reason that was, we get rid of the, the, the risk that it was meter. We, you know, put something in, you know, it's better than nothing. Um, I don't know how you justify it, my, my concern is, is that we, we've had, in the five years I've been on council, we've probably had a dozen or more of these requests to come in, this would be the first time, I think, in my memory that we've ever done anything. Um, and, uh, but, you know, people ask for it. Now, if all of a sudden somebody uses more water than they think, and it's legit, and they look at it and go, "Oh, wow, you know, my meter's busted," all of a sudden, we're going to be shipping out meters, and we still have the same predicament where, you know, maybe it was being shipped and it was being bumped or whatever, and so we can't, we can't go so far on the, on the downside now. You know, I, I think that we've done the right thing by getting rid of the meter and upgrading to the digital. And I just, I don't, I don't see how we can go more without it creating a slippery slope too.
I agree with that, it's, it's crappy that he gets the whole bill, but at least we're doing something towards it, paying half of it, and he's, Robin's right, in nine years of being on council, we've never refunded money on a water bill. And they come in quite frequently, because people do overwater and then get that bill at the end of summer going, "Holy cow." Six or seven hundred dollars worth of water, because they kept their yard clean all summer, and they're going, "I didn't know that was going to happen." So, yeah, could, should there be more? Possibly, but this is at least trying to meet in the middle. Mike?
Well, not to drag this out, but from somebody that doesn't pay water with a meter, I just want, just a little clarification. Let's just say we, he said he uses thirty a month, right, average? Thirty cubes a month, average, so let's say we, he used fifty for those two months, so what's a hundred cubes, what did that, what did that cost? I just wanted to clarify for, not only myself, but...
I think if we go off of what my water bill was for last...
That's my point.
If you go off, it's about six hundred, between six and seven hundred, when we're watering, when we're doing everything in the summer.
Paying seven fifty, basically, so.
Yeah, so, and I realize he didn't water a lot in the, on the grass side, but we're just trying to use this as a balance, right? So, I don't think we're too far out. Everybody's good? No more questions? Everybody's good, no more questions? Motion is to reimburse half and the fifty dollar call-out fee and no penalties, no late penalties. Vote. Okay, that motion is carried. So, uh, somebody will speak with Mr. Sakman? Okay, you seen the motion, so the refund is half? Okay, she'll take, will take care of you there, so. All right, I need a motion to go back in camera then. Plane's moving to go in camera? Vote.